Shannon, Shannon, real quick. Okay.
I'm sorry, I was muted. You can open them both.
Okay.
Hear one after the other.
Okay, then, all right, so they virtual. Let me catch the one hold on. Oh, please be right with you. All right, and also open up the Ballpark City Council regular meeting. So the time is seven twelve. At this point, I believe that we're expecting Pastor Flores to come on board for an invocation. We get him on, please?
Yes, he's here. He's just muted.
Thank you. All righty.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, and all those participating in the meeting today. Let us pray. Gracias señor por este momento. Gracias por la ciudad de Baldwin Park y sus todos sus perdonaciones aquí en la ciudad. Gracias por los miembros de la comunidad señor. De ahora en señor por tu profesión en medio de este pandemia aquí en esta ciudad sanada y salvada. Lord, we thank you, God, for the privilege you've given us to be part of this community. We thank you for our council, mayor, leaders, Lord, that give. Lord, as servants, as public servants, we pray for wisdom. God, as we seek truth to to serve the population, to serve the city well. Or give us grace, Lord, in this time of need, Lord. In this time, Lord, of of election, Lord. Lord, we pray, Lord, for your mercy and your understanding, God. Lord, we just commit all these things to you, Lord, in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ, who taught us how to pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts, as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Divine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Dr. Flores, as always. Having you here is an honor and a privilege for us. Please say hi to the family. All righty, so at this point, actually, let's go ahead and do the the flag salute. So I will ask everyone to please stand. All righty, so at this point, place your, take this off. Place your, write over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, thank, thank you very much. Right, okay, all right, too, I just wanna, first of all, begin by acknowledging the election that just occurred this past Tuesday. First, I want to, at this point, acknowledge council member Monica Garcia, who was reelected, so I want to congratulate her. Also, the new council member coming on on board, Mr. Danny Damian, we'll also want to thank him. And recognize and thank Ms. Gina Yala, which will be outgoing from the city council. We will go over to the the Ballpark Unified School District. Ms. Christina Lucero overwhelmingly was was reelected. And also Ms. Diane, the zip was elected to the Ballpark Unified School District. And Mr. Santos, want to say to my good friend, Mr. Robert Guzman Valera, who I know will continue to be very active out in the community. He's a person who tremendous voice in speaking out for those that have voiceless, a teacher at service to high school. So I want to give him a recognition, too. The Valley County Water District, where we have Mr. Ralph Galvan, who was elected, awesome. And also Mr. Javier Javier Vargas, who was elected. And wanna also thank and acknowledge Mr. Vasquez, who ran and unfortunately didn't make it to the to the position, so a good job, by the way. And also the Upper San Gabriel, we want to thank Mr. Al Contreras, who is outgoing. And the new person that's coming in, I forget the person's name, anyone know, the new person just got elected to the Upper San Gabriel? I I forget the name, so just wanted everyone know. And of course, the mayor of the city Ballpark, Mr. Estrada, who I will be personally contacting. I had the honor and the pleasure to have dinner with him about two years ago. I believe it was around two years ago, so change is inevitable, as it is in any politics. So I look forward and doing the, as we go through the transition, I believe, in the first meeting in December. So just want to let everyone know what an honor and what a privilege it has been for me, a journey that began in nineteen ninety-two. So it's been quite some time, and I will have words to say once we go through the actual ceremony as well, so thank you.
Mayor, our new city clerk as well.
Oh, that's right, I forget before I forget, hopefully she's not watching, Alejandra. All right, yes, my friend, former commissioner and former council member, Ms. Marlene Garcia was also elected to city clerk. So I think we have a good group of a team coming on board. And I look forward, because I will continue to be active in the community in making certain that we're that we're moving the city forward, so thank you very much. All right.
Mr. Mayor, we also have to recognize Ms. Margarita Vargas for her service over with the Valley County Water District.
She's not watching, hope she's not watching, yes. Margarita Vargas, who served thirteen years on the Valley County Water District, one of the most senior person, longest serving there during her tenure with the Valley County Water District. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor Hernandez. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and open up the public communication. So let's do roll calls, excuse me, we're gonna do roll call our deputy city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Avila, here. Councilmember Yala, here. Councilmember Garcia, here. Mayor Proton Hernandez.
Present.
And Mayor Lozano.
Present, people, present. Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right.
And I believe Ms. Marie Contreras is here.
Yes, Marie, how could we forget, Marie Contreras, yes, thank you very much, Marie. All right, so at this point, I will go ahead and open up to the public communication. So, Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone, deputy clerk?
Mayor, we also have a short presentation, if you want to do that first, it's up to you.
Let's do it after the public.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
The first is Mr. Rios, John Rios.
Good evening, yes. Thank you.
Hello?
Hey, Mr. Rios, Manuel Lozano, good evening, sir, this is the application, sir.
How are you doing?
Fine, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Rios. And Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Rios requested a translator, and we do have onboard, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Rios.
During the campaign and whatever happened and everything, you know, that burn box of the bell box and everything, it was just strange. We're the only in the United States that had that.
Excuse me, Mr. Rios. Did he request?
The nation, you know, but you know, this is why I've always told you guys, you guys work for the community. You guys don't work for yourself. You do that profit from from the community. You know, and that's one of the things we you have to, while you're leaving, you know, thank God, you know, but I hope you learn your lesson in life. And but we still have other businesses to take care of. That we still have some people in the council that we need to get rid of. But that's beside the point right now. But thank God you're leaving. Okay, so I hope the new mayor can listen to the community. And that's about it, you know. Thank you.
Thank you very much, all right. Okay, so are we translating, is that what we're doing? Or was it not?
No, originally, he had asked to speak in Spanish, but I guess he decided not to.
All right.
So we can go ahead with the next speaker.
We'll move on to the next one.
The next speaker is Mr. Tuttle.
All righty.
Hello?
Mr. Tuttle, this is Manny Lozano, yeah, this is a public communication, sir, you go ahead and speak.
Okay, also, I have translation, too.
I, okay, I, do we have the translation? Can someone help me out there, please?
Yes, I'm available.
If he's, uh, Mayor, we have a translator here, if he's gonna speak in Spanish, we will translate it into English.
Sounds good, all righty.
Go ahead.
What did he say?
Yes, we do have a translator, so once you finish speaking, we'll have someone translate. We do have a a person.
All right, I can speak in English and you'll translate into Spanish.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe that's what Shannon said. Shannon, do you mind repeating what it was, so we have clarity?
Yeah, the translator is available if someone wants to speak in Spanish, to translate it into English so that they could communicate to the city council.
So you're asking for another racial lawsuit, because you're not gonna translate me into Spanish, is that what you're saying?
Let's go and move on, Mr. Tuttle.
Okay, well, you guys want it, fine. I want to congratulate Estrada for a great campaign against Mayor Lozano. It's taken many years to defeat Mayor Lozano. I also want to thank the FBI for their great work on finally believing the people that our city councils, city directors, city manager, and especially city attorney are corrupt. It's been a long three years working with it. And I'm hoping with the new council people, they will help clean up the mess and get rid of the bad employees, contractors that we have in the city. In fact, I urge them to get the vote certified quickly and get sworn in, so many any of these buddy deals that the current council is trying to pass tonight or in the near future will be stopped. There's a lot of overpaying corrupt personnel in the city that will need to go. The jail is a no-brainer, it's a loser and needs to go also to Almonte. There isn't going to be a dramatic loss of police on patrol time loss. We all know that Lozano wanted to help the jail and why, but it's not cost-effective. We're hoping Marlene Garcia will be not sworn in and decide to not take that position, because all her buddies won't be there. She only did this because of Lozano, and he wanted to keep all the cronies to cronies together like Gina Allen and her. Now that the new blood is coming into the council, changes will have to be done, like the law firms, outside contractors, personnel, overpaid people, and much more. Rose Tan, Pacheco, Lozano, Tafoya, Manny Correio, all serve the people and will be busy next year dealing with the corruption charges. The Baldwin Park Electric Company will need to be short, shut down, and stopped, because the residents will soon find out that their electric bills will be sky-high, because the city played the scam game with them. So in this time, the people need to understand that the city is trying to run your electric company, and you're going to pay higher rates, but they didn't notify you properly with the cards in Spanish or anything else. If you don't translate this into Spanish, you're asking for a lawsuit, that's it.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Tuttle. All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, we have Steve Kofra.
All righty. All right, good evening. Mr. Steve, oh, you're dialing.
Yeah, I'm dialing right now, sorry.
Hi, Steve, are we dialing?
We're dialing right now.
Your call has been forwarded, automatic voice message.
Would you like me to try him one more time again?
Yeah, yeah, one more time.
Look, Lolo, I understand he sent a letter to the council, did he ask to be called? Because we can just submit the letter to the council.
Okay, we'll we'll forward the letter to council.
All right, that's fine, all right, let's move on, right, so.
I'm sorry, we have one more, sorry, Mayor.
Oh, you do.
Yes, next is Javier Navarro.
Okay.
And this is regarding the lack of street and Morgan Park lighting maintenance. Let me go ahead and make this.
Hello?
It's Javier Navarro, it's Manuel Lozano, Mayor Baldwin Park, how are you, sir?
Uh, okay.
Okay, this is a time for you to share what information you have, you have approximately three minutes.
Okay, 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 good evening, Mayor, and Councilman. Uh, tonight, I want to talk about the lack of maintenance on the streetlights, especially down Ramona Boulevard between Main and Baldwin Park Boulevard, and the lights in Morgan Park. There's no light there, I mean, whatever lights there, it's just dark. Hello, can you still hear me?
Yes, we can, yes, sir.
Oh, okay, yeah. That's my turn, I thought. Yeah, I I've been using the the Go Request app, reporting some of these lights, but there's so many that it's chasing me forever to 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 go around and report them. So if somebody, if somebody from the city can just go down there at night and walk around, they can see what lights are on and off. And, you know, there's under Ramona Boulevard, on either side, the tall street, streetlights lamps, some of them are off, three in a row. The the little old-fashioned lights, like the twelve-foot tall ones around the parking spaces on each side of Ramona, half of them are gone. And especially around the park, there's some dark spots there, that, you know, just somebody has to go down there at night and take a look and get it fixed. This is just an ongoing thing that I've been going over with some personnel in the park, you know, this is going for back years and years. So if somebody just, you know, from the city can go around at night and make a list and get it done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and we could follow up with the gentleman, Mr. Navarro. And Sam, we could kind of look at that that area as well, thank you very much.
Yes, Mayor, we we will follow up, we're aware of a couple of the problems and are working on some tires. Follow up with an inspection, thank you.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Second, public comments, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, at this point, I will go ahead and adjourn for public comment, that's my motion. Your second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Alejandro Avila, any objections, see, none so move. All righty, so at this point, we'll go ahead and go over to the, let me see, one moment, we have consent calendar, we have items one through six.
Mayor, we have a short presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Sam Gutierrez.
Yeah, hi, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. We have a special announcement today, we wanted to report about some funding that was just awarded to the city. This is part of the Safe Clean Water Program. This is Measure W, if you recall back in twenty eighteen, is a voter approved by the voters, it's a measure that was approved by the voters. And so we've recently been awarded a funding for one of our big projects, it's it's a big regional project here in Barnes Park. I've asked John Bichette to put together some slides and just go over it. But the announcement is that the total amount of the grant is fourteen million, seven hundred, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand. So it's a big grant, it's a big project, and John will speak a little bit on the details. John?
I'm mute, John. Sorry. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I would like to present before you the Barnes Park infiltration project, regional project of Measure W. On November sixth, twenty eighteen, Measure W for the Safe Clean Water Program was approved by the Los Angeles County Boarders. This multi-benefit measure provides cities with funds to capture, treat, and recycle stormwater. The city of Baldwin Park was awarded fourteen point seven million for the design and construction of the regional project at Barnes Park. Measure W, round one, had selected and approved forty-one projects equivalent to two ninety-four million awarded for infrastructure for stormwater. The project, the funds will be given to the city over four fiscal years. Fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, one million dollars fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, one point five million. Fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, seven point four million. And fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, four point eight million. This project collectively will have, or the project for the region will have over twelve hundred construction jobs will be created over the forty-one selected projects. Next slide. The the installation of the infiltration gallery of one point eighteen acre will capture about sixty percent of the average rainfall every year. As shown in the exhibit, the water will be captured and stored in an underground gallery and structures, and will be slowly infiltrated and percolating into the ground. The gallery is about ten feet in height underground. Next slide. The local and the regional project benefits will collect drainage area of four hundred and forty acres into Barnes Park of six point forty-four acre. This will recharge the groundwater in the Upper San Gabriel Valley and will also capture metals such as zinc, nutrients, and bacteria. It will also capture trash before entering to the San Gabriel River. This project will have onsite bioswells and planting and drought-tolerant trees. This will help reduce urban heat island effect and increase carbon sequestration. Also will increase the quality of the recreational play area and the passive use green space. Will improve the flood management and public health. There's also educational benefits through collaborations of community partners. Next slide. In addition to the stormwater benefits and improvements, will also have some park enhancements such as new dock park in the wistly side of the park, new basketball court, two new soccer fields, multi-age play equipment, nighttime activities with sports sliding, running and walking trails, exercise machines with shade structures, picnic opportunities, and extension to the parking lot. Next slide. The proposed schedule for this project, the design completion in October twenty twenty-one, following this with bid of the project in November twenty twenty-one and award in December twenty twenty-one. The construction phase will approximately take eighteen months, starting in early twenty twenty-two with anticipated to be completed in mid twenty twenty-three by June. Next slide. The project support, this, finally, the the project is supported by community partners and neighboring city within our Upper San Gabriel Watershed Management Group. And this is the end of the presentation, and if you have any questions.
All right, council members have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. No, this is fantastic, this is, you know, one of the reasons for, you know, many of us in our community voted for this, considering that what it's gonna be doing for the our local groundwater supply. You know, as we know, about ninety-two or ninety-five percent of all rainfall is captured, you know, above us, up in San Gabriel Valleys, and, you know, and then re-released back into our our local community, where we get about eighty percent of our own groundwater here in Baldwin Park beneath us. This is fantastic. The one thing I, you know, like to discuss maybe in the future is, you know, if we can look at, you know, how we can do perhaps local hiring and or PLA agreements in and around this project. I'd like to know, you know, if it's large enough to even do that. So we can have that discussion at a later time, but this is fantastic for our region and for our city, our residents.
Mayor.
Yes, council member Monica Garcia.
I just want to say great job to staff, this is great, thank you, very excited about this.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, excellent, John, can you send me?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Yes, we'll send that out to everybody.
Thank you, great presentation, thank you.
And Mayor, before we move on, if there's no other questions, I do want to point out a couple changes to the agenda. We have an item six on the consent calendar, and a replacement report was sent out to everybody with minor changes. We had an additional company provide a lower bid after the report was posted, so we are submitting that as a revision. And that will go on the consent calendar, you will have that before you. And then I will ask the city council if they would add an urgency item onto the agenda, take a vote to add on the item for consideration of immediate termination of W and F Corporation cannabis development agreement.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to place that an urgency on the agenda, that is my motion.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Alejandro, have we, any objections? See, none so move, all right.
Robert, did you need to make a statement on that, why we're adding that? City Attorney.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was muted by accident, but I would like to lay a foundation for that urgency item, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The basis for the urgency item is that we received a report from our police department after the agenda was posted. The report contained information that serves as the basis for the item at hand. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to consider that item first, I can give a brief overview of the item for the city council and for the public.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
So this is in regards to W and F International Corporation obtained a development agreement with the city of Baldwin Park for eighty-five seventy-two square feet of manufacturing and cannabis cultivation at four eight oh two Little John Street, Suite B in Baldwin Park. The the company is currently, does not have a certificate of occupancy of the property. It was found that there was illegal construction at the property. W and F is delinquent in payments of over five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which according to the contract results in automatic termination. And then owner of the property and applicant Yi Chang Bai was arrested recently by the El Monte Police Department and the Drug Enforcement Agency for possession of marijuana, intent to sell furnished marijuana hashish, and planting and cultivating marijuana and hashish. And so with that, we would ask the city council to direct staff to immediately and automatically terminate the development agreement with the city of Baldwin Park and W and F Corporation.
All right, so, okay, at this point, I'll go ahead and make a a motion.
Second. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so so at this point, at this point, we'll go over to consent calendar. So we have items, one more, items one through through six, council members wishing to pull any items?
Mr. Mayor, can we pull item five, please?
Item five, yes. Any other items? All right, at this point, I'll go ahead and make a a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item five, that is my motion, so second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Hernandez. All right, so item five, we can ratify and adopt the resolution to update the city Ballpark job classification plan by deleting two public works supervisor positions and adding a new position in public works, maintenance operations manager, and approve wide range of employees subject to demotion, and approve update to the city of Ballpark's comprehensive pay schedule in accordance with CalPERS established guidelines. with Calpers established guidelines staff recommend the city council. All right, go ahead at this point.
Thank you. Thank you. Shannon, I just wanted to bring up the item in regards to the why rating. If you could please explain, you know, to us and more importantly, the audience as to what that means for some of our employees that would have been affected by the reorg, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam Hernandez, and thank you for bringing that up. And so this is technically a layoff and a demotion, but I do want to point out that no employees will be losing their jobs. And then what happens with the why rating, even though an employee gets bumped down to a lower position in the organization, the why rating means that they will retain their current pay scale until the time specified in the report. So that's important in these in these these times when a lot of families are in need and there's a lot of unemployment that we don't create a hardship for the employees.
I appreciate that clarification because again, as we've, you know, discussed our budget and during this period of time, we haven't let go any full-time staff member during this period. So again, this just continues that process until next June of twenty twenty-one. You know, what I will ask of my colleagues is that, you know, we bring this back, you know, in concurrent as we discuss our, you know, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget cycle and review the timeline. And perhaps, you know, look at consideration for extending it because there's a lot of moving parts in this item that could, you know, alter the timeline if needed between now and June of next year. So, thank you. So with that, I like to just make a motion to adopt and ratify and adopt item five with the resolution of the job classification as noted exactly in our agenda. Thank you.
All right, is there a second?
Are you moving to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, so we'll go over to the item, Public Hearing. Item number seven, which is an appeal of the planning commission's decision to deny and request for conditional use permit for the operations of a mobile recycling facility within the industrial commercial IC zone. Section table one five zero or zero two zero, city municipal call location for forty-two, forty-two park park place applicant Weimer and Hernandez Gonzalez. Case number CP twenty dash zero nine. The item was continued from October twenty twenty-first city council meeting. Staff recommended that the city council hold a public hearing and adopt resolution twenty twenty dash zero five five and had a resolution of city council. City ballpark, well, yeah, at this point, go ahead and open up the public hearing. So do we, do we, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have anyone for the public hearing?
Yes, we do. We have Mr. Greg Tuttle. Let me dial now.
Hello?
Mr. Tuttle, this is Manny regarding the public hearing, the appeal of the planning commission decision. Go ahead.
Okay, well, just to let Shannon know, I requested this to be from English to Spanish. So I don't know what game he's playing, but that's fine. Okay, so let me start my speech. This man has operated on city property behind the barber shop over by Royal Coaches for close to a year without no city license, no permits to run a recycling center. He has an old truck, he has fifty-five gallon drums and he pours all the recycling cans into the go all over the grounds. And the trash is all over the place. I called numerous times for code enforcement to have him removed and to clean up the mess. And the city says they only had one complaint. That's not, that's not true. They had numerous complaints by me and to the code enforcement. His new location where he's at, where he's trying to get in over Royal Coaches is located very close to houses that are occupied. Also, you have businesses on the other side of the fence that deal with the public. You also have a restaurant down the street and my business and other businesses are up at the front of the street. We don't need rats and we don't need other animals around that area that this place would attract. There's also, this is a very narrow road that has no parking on either side of the street that Royal Coaches violates every day. I called police department trying to get them to come over and enforce it. Now, this guy's going to be bringing in more business down that road and parking it. He won't have any parking there but two lousy little parking in this small little area. The kind of place belongs away from houses, businesses and restaurants. And it needs to be over near Arrow Highway or some commercial buildings where we don't have public coming into. If you approve this tonight, we'll just bring it back to the city council when we have a new council. And we'll get it removed with this conditional use permit because I know he's going to violate it. This time when we were at the planning commission, Teforia made a comment which was very stupid and said, well, the guy didn't understand. He needed a city license and permit to operate over there behind the barber shop. Well, if the guy's not that bright, then he's not going to be bright enough to do the right thing over at Royal Coaches. So I strongly suggest that you deny his request for this recycling center there. We don't need it over there by us. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Do we have any other, okay, that's one public hearing. Do we have anyone else to speak on the subject?
No, Mayor, we don't.
All right, okay. All right, so at this point, council members?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
The applicant is here to speak and then I think Ron, City Planner Ron Garcia has a short presentation if you'd like to see that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Can I, can I, let let me just make sure that the record is very clear regarding the public hearing. We have had one person speak against. And I believe the deputy senior city clerk said that there are no other people speaking against. And there are no people speaking in favor. Is that correct?
I believe, I believe the applicant is here and may may want to speak in favor, Ron. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you, Shannon. The applicant, Wilmer Hernandez, as well as the applicant's representative is also present.
So Mayor, maybe we could let the applicant speak first and then Ron could give a short presentation. The applicant speak.
Mark, if you could, could you please unmute, I think, the attendee listed as X? And also Wilmer.
Yeah, yes, I'll mute it.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Baron Council. This is Roger Hernandez on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Wilmer Hernandez Gonzalez. Are you there? Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, if I could just quickly say, Mr. Mayor, thank you for all your wonderful years of service. It's always been a pleasure to interact with you and to do business with you as a former representative of Baldwin Park. I've found nothing but the most level of of genuineness and and true, true, true charisma as a representative of your city. You've always represented Baldwin Park with true diplomacy. So with that, I'll just transition. I want to thank the city council for taking the the kind of stewardship that has put the environment first. Today was no different. You showcased what the city is working on, whether it's the retention of of rainwater, solar energy and really making the city a more efficient, sustainable way. This project is yet another opportunity to expand on that focus. Mr. Wilmer Hernandez is a licensed recycler, recycler in the state of California. He does hold a state license and is licensed to operate in other communities. He is looking to expand into Baldwin Park and has so for well over a year and a half now. He wishes to provide this service not where it's typically located in in many communities like West Covina or Kaden Walnut. Or these kinds of CRV bottle collection facilities are typically situated at supermarkets. He's looking to adhere to the council and public's desire to maybe have a more private, further away from residential sighting of the location. That's why he's proposing a site in your industrial commercial. This proposal has had enjoyed Planning Commission staff recommendation on at least two prior occasions. My my client, the applicant, is 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 a little bewildered as to why the opposition. He believes that he is helping the environment, creating a couple of jobs for the city of Baldwin Park and really creating an opportunity to expand on the objectives, not just of the city, but of the state. Very recently this year, the California legislature is is pushing an agenda to increase the use of recyclables in into plastics and 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 glass and aluminum products. And believe it or not, these CRV collection facilities represent a third of that California's recyclable goods. So we're hoping that the council will see that the sighting is there. There's no violations or or any noise that is superior to the existing noises there. There is no emissions there. There's no acceptance of any fluids or gases that would be illegal. You cannot even accept empty milk gallon there. So we ask for your full consideration. This is there's no sequel issues. Your staff confirms that. This is a project that is would help in furthering the city's recycling goals. We ask for your support. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak in a public hearing?
Anyone else? Now I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there a second? Second, any objections? See you now so move. All right, at this point, I'll go ahead and make a a motion to resolution of the city council of the city of Baldwin Park adopting the findings of fact and denying, excuse me. So I I'm going to read the wrong one. Findings of act and denying the condition of use permit to allow the operation. I'm reading the right one because I want to approve it.
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, the recommendations, so you would need to make a motion to approve the recycling plant.
Right, but at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the the recycling facility. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any objections?
Mr. Mayor, before we take the vote, can we, can I ask a few questions of staff, please?
Please, staff?
Yes, Mayor Protam.
Thank you. So just out of curiosity, what type of outreach was done? I I believe there's like one home on that property that's been there for for many, many years. That's just essentially surrounded by all these, you know, businesses or one business or whatever that case might be.
A good question, Mayor Protam. So the outreach as required by the municipal code is a three hundred foot notification to all property owners and occupants from the property. So a notice of public hearing was done for the planning commission as well as for the city council meeting. And no one submitted comments other than Mr. Tuttle. The house that you are referring to is a legal non-conforming residential house located on a industrial commercial lot. So no expansion of that structure can take place. Once that structure is removed, it cannot be replaced. So it's a legal non-conforming, single-family residence.
Thank you. And then just for historical reference, it was mentioned that the applicant mentioned that this had been approved or recommended twice by staff.
So the, what he was referring to, this is a, that was a different case that was reviewed before the planning commission at a different site in the city. Located close to this site off of Ramona. If you're familiar with that site, I think it has the the former barber shop building. He has not been there. That was a case that was reviewed and decided upon by the planning commission last year. And this site, that site was recommended for approval, but the planning commission decided to deny that case. In this case, this is a different site. Staff did recommend approval again for this. And the planning commission decided to to deny the 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 request. And so that's why it's before you.
Do you have, no, I appreciate that. Can you provide some background as to why the commission denied the applicant? The recent one, this one?
Oh, this one. Oh, yeah.
What were their concerns?
Yeah, so some of the concerns that were that were essentially given is essentially noise, traffic and air quality. That was the basis for for the denial of the of the of the conditional use permit.
And when it comes to the the traffic, because I know some of these facilities are, you know, are used heavily. How much traffic do we think or how many customers do we think he'll be, he'll be receiving on a daily basis? Because they are open, I believe, also on Saturday and Sundays. Is that correct?
That is correct. So their proposed hours of operation consist of Monday through Saturday, nine AM. I'm sorry, nine AM to four PM, Monday through Saturday, and then nine AM to two PM on on Sunday. That's a good question, Paul. I would probably refer that to the applicant in providing what the actual average numbers of clients that would be dropping off recyclables at the facility.
Right. I mean, again, there is a very commercial lane in that area, so it's already being utilized. You know, not only during the daytime, but also during the evening time. And then looking in the sense of homes, there are some across the street, but that doesn't necessarily preclude, you know, differentiates whether it's this facility or any or any other business that is located on on Ramona Boulevard. You know, working on Saturdays or Sundays. So, thank you. I just, I just wanted some clarification for for myself.
Hello, Ron?
Yes.
So did they do an air quality analysis since the planning commission had a concern about this?
No, I think it was a question of air, air quality came up, but there, again, this is a a small recycling facility. And their question was whether there's going to be an impact on air quality based on the the types of recyclables. I think there was some confusion there as this being a a a large industrial commercial recycling facility. But that was just one of the comments that had had come up.
Was it a comment or a concern that they were requesting an air quality report?
No, it was just a comment that was provided by one of the planning commissioners, but it was not a request. And in my professional experience dealing with recyclable, small recycling facilities in this way, a air quality analysis is is something that that's beyond what would be requested for this type of use.
And what kind of businesses around that area? I know it's commercial. What do you have right adjacent to them?
Good question. Let me, Mark or David, can you bring up this part point? Just so that way I can give you some context as to the location of the facility. Can you go to the next? Okay, here we go. So as you can see on the 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 aerial, there's an area here, here's park place. And then you can see Ramona, which is to the south. So some of the lots that are that exist within that area are operated by Royal Royal Coaches. And to the north of the site, you can see the green dot there. There is a single-family residential structure there. If you go to the next slide, David? Some of the uses, you can see the Google aerial, you see Royal Coaches, you see some industrial uses that that are to the east. Again, just not, you have Estrato Smog Shop and then you, again, you have some light industrial uses that are to the east of that. To the west of that is the LA County Public Works Yard. That's there, which is right to the west of it. If you go to the next slide, David? So just to give you a context, this is the, this is a site that the applicant will be operating out of. It's a vacant lot. Again, this is a Google street view, but you can see to the side, you can see Ramona Boulevard and then you can see park place there. And that's how the site would be accessed. If you go to the next slide. And then just to give you a little deeper insight on the site, you have two parking spaces for the operation for a drop-off of recyclables. And then you see the small recycling mobile truck there where the recyclables would be collected. So hopefully that answers your your truck there where the recyclables would be collected. So hopefully that answers your your question with respect to uh the location and its surrounding uses within uh the industrial commercial zone.
And which kind of recyclables were there again? I'm so sorry.
So typical recycle uh uh small recycling facilities, uh you're looking at glass, plastic bottles um that would be collected.
Okay, how big is that property?
The property is uh approximately three thousand square feet.
Okay, that was all. Thank you.
Ron?
Yes.
It's Councilmember Monica Garcia. I have a question for you. Hi. Um, we had a a recycling center across from Morgan Park. And it did become problematic. And so we had to intervene and shut it down. Do you have conditions of approval in this, in the language here? That would have give us, you know, the opportunity to address, you know, any, any challenges, any, any issues that could arise from this?
Good question, Councilwoman Garcia. So yes, uh as I provided, there's a a resolution if the council were to decide to overturn the planning commission uh decision. I did include a uh a resolution for approval. And for that reason, to mitigate any potential uses in the future, um I will read a couple of the the conditions of approval to help mitigate any potential problems in the future. So um, uh, so I've I I've indicated in the approval resolution that uh that cannot operate outside of the hours of operation as presented before you, as well as recyclables, any um, uh, and the site must be cleaned on an everyday basis. Um, it must be, and no fluids, uh is fluids of uh being dumped on the property is strictly prohibited. Uh, so in this way, give you a hypothetical of code enforcement received any complaints or happened to drive by uh that they're in compliance with this conditional use permit. Uh, and so uh, uh, at the end of the day, if they are found in violation, the uh the municipal code does allow for um, the city to um, uh, to consider the conditional use permit uh and revoke the the and go through a revocation process.
Okay, so if it becomes problematic as far as the, you know, nuisance, like any nuisance, then we would have the ability to do that?
Absolutely, just like you would with any uh conditional use permit. There is a, there is a process to go through a revocation uh uh hearing. Uh, and again, those conditions are laid out in the approval resolution. I will say, just based on my professional experience working with uh these types of facilities um over the years of compile the list of uh conditions to make sure that uh the operation of the facility is operated uh within those guidelines to help mitigate any negative uh impacts as the one that you mentioned that existed um across from uh from Morgan Park.
Okay, good. And then my next question is, um, this is a, this is a site that is prime for redevelopment, and we have been looking at it uh as possibly a larger project in the future, um revitalization. And so with that said, how would we go about in the future if if we wanted to you know, use a site to assemble um something larger and propose a project? Are we able to do that? Are we creating an impediment? And if um, and if there is an impediment, then would we want to consider like an uh an annual review?
Good, good question. You know, again, because it's private property, they're leasing, they are leasing this uh um, they are essentially renting this site from the property owner. Um, and so it's based, again, uh based on what's exists within the uh lease agreement. Um, uh, I think it would be problematic if, let's say, they signed a long-term lease agreement. Um, uh, but in the short term, I I'm not aware of the specifics of what the the lease agreement consists of. Um, but just based on my experience, when things like this happen, it's a private matter. Maybe the property owner can work out a short uh term, a shorter lease. Um, and then wait until that has come up uh to be able to assemble the the, you know, uh future development. Um, on the, to answer your second question with regards to uh annual review, we could build in, the council at your discretion could include in the approval resolution an annual review of the use, the operation of the use of this facility.
Okay, because I have no problem with this facility operating. Um, but if we do move in the direction of a revitalization of this area, I certainly, I certainly wouldn't want our decision tonight to create that impediment. So um, you guide us and advise us on what we should do. Like I said, I'm I'm by moving it forward, I just don't want to create the impediment um for the long term and a revitalization project and and vision. So do we need to bring this back? And uh with some modified language, or do we do that this evening? And um, do it, would it require more coordination between the uh property owner and the business that's leasing? So what do you, what is your recommendation?
Yeah, my my recommendation, I think we should, we should re- um, reach out to the applicant or the representative uh to see if they're open uh to discuss that with the the property owner uh so so that way we can get some more specifics on whether it's a long-term lease agreement. Uh, uh, but again, it is a private matter, but um with my recommendation, I probably, uh, you could build something into the and let me be clear, I don't want to confuse you. The option here is the the review of the operation of the facility, we couldn't, we couldn't build something in there where we only allow this use to exist for a year or two. Um, essentially, it's just a review and operation of the facility to make sure that they're operating within the conditions of the of the conditional use permit.
Okay, I get that.
Yeah.
I think the win, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think the win-win here is, yes, we can allow the operator to you know, have a conditional use permit, but the city would like to be able to negotiate something in the near future with regard to revitalization. Uh, that is our vision, and we've been clear about it even before this was proposed. So I think that the win-win is to work with the business owner and the property owner and work out what that looks like, so that we we both get what we need uh from this.
Councilmember, um, and and Ron, this is uh CEO Shannon Yahtzee. Um, I believe, Ron, this will have to come back with a res- resolution of approval. Is that correct?
The res- uh, the, there's a, there is a resolution of approval attached to this presentation.
So the council could approve it tonight, staff could research this problem, or we might be able to ask the applicant if they're still available. Um, but we can find out if it's a long-term or short-term lease. Ultimately, as as Ron said, because it's private property, that really leaves us with with two options um, uh as far as redevelopment uh of this area. And one would be to wait till that lease expires, and number two would be to uh buy out that lease as part of the redevelopment project. So those are kind of the options um that you generally have. And and part of that is because um you know, because of the the change in redevelopment laws, we don't have the power of eminent domain like we used to.
Right.
Less the project, unless the project is affordable housing, when this is an industrial area. So but those are sort of the options, and and staff could research that and and get back to you.
Can, can you bring the item back to the next council meeting?
Oh, sure.
Absolutely.
Sure. I don't know if the applicant is here, if they have an answer on the the term of the lease, if it's a a year-to-year lease or if it's a fifty-year lease.
See, are are they still there?
Yeah, I'm still here. Can I speak to that?
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Garcia. Those are excellent questions. The uh first and foremost, I will tell you uh that this has been a uh an agreement uh that is made between the property owner uh in terms of the lease of the the three thousand foot site, uh square foot area site. Uh, the understanding between the property owner and the tenant is that should the property owner uh enter into a development agreement with the city for potential uh uh housing development that uh that that lease would come to an end. Uh, currently, the lease is uh, I believe, on a month-to-month basis. The tenant uh understands that it's never guaranteed, uh but has continued to pay a lea- uh a monthly uh rental agreement over the course of at least a year and a half. So uh they're the the property owner and the uh leasing maintain a lot of flexibility here. Uh, they urge uh your your support tonight, and I can, I can vouch for both uh my client, uh Mr. Wilmer Hernandez Gutierrez, and the property owner that they have a clear understanding that should the property owner desire to develop his property, sell his property to the city, or any other private entity for the purpose of meeting a city's future uh new vision uh for uh objectives in developing uh revitalizing the area into a a different use that that would take a paramount in the decisions of the property owner. So I I can, I can assure you of that.
Well, I I think I mean, thank you for the assurance. I think it would be nice to get that um documented for the cities, because what we're, we're being asked for a discretionary approval this evening. And that is the city's decision. That's, and so I hear what you're saying about the private property, and what I'm saying is, you know, let's have a win-win. Um, let's let the operator operate his business and the property owner have his lease. Um, but I think that having the, you know, the, again, just removing any impediment because what happens sometimes is that when we're trying to revitalize, and you know this well, uh, revitalize a a property, you know, then you have all these strings attached, and then the the um sale price goes up, and then it just creates an impediment. And I don't think we want to do that this evening. So I'm just trying to find the win-win and to, in, you know, to document um what that looks like this evening, so that we can go ahead and move forward if we, if we can do that.
So uh, if you could please clarify, what what exactly are we trying to uh what is the condition you'd like to see met? I, by the way, I just got confirmation from the property owner. Uh, the, if this were to be approved tonight, uh it, the pursuant to the agreement between the property owner and uh the applicant, it's a two-year, it would trigger a two-year um uh lease agreement. So it's not, I wouldn't consider that a long-term agreement, it's two-year agreement.
Okay.
Right, so we're okay with that, Councilmember?
Yeah, I think so. Um, I mean, Ron, I think, yeah, Ron, um do you want to include the the, like, a review in two years, possibly?
Um, what we would have to do, so for the operation of the conditional use permit, it would have to be related to the operations of the facility, not, not to review whether the lease is uh has been or is under consideration to be extended.
Okay.
Yeah, um.
Okay, well. Like I said, I mean, I think, I think, um, yeah, it's two years, I think, is fine, because I don't, I don't see us putting something together in two years. But again, the 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 um, the goal with this area is to revitalize it. The property owner knows that, you know, he's been part of conversations or so, you know, I think that as long as this doesn't create any impediments, that's my only, that's all I, that's all I want clear here.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. I can guarantee you, uh, the, the, the property owner has made it very clear that he's interested in developing his property. Uh, that would take primacy over um uh, one of a, one of several tenants that that occupy his, his larger compound property that he, he, he currently owns today. Uh, that would have primacy, and he's given me the authorization to communicate that to the council and uh as is, as uh someone that knows that he's, as a council member, you know that uh Mr. Salazar is a person of his of his word. Uh, he's uh someone that's been uh always responsible with the city's affairs. And so he's giving me the authorization to communicate that.
Okay, that's fine. Well, we'll just go with that then.
Councilwoman Garcia, just one, one, one final comment. Um, there is a condition in the, this, the approval of the CUP saying that, indicating that um if the operation of the facility were to cease operations it uh essentially would remove from any future uh recycling facility from going into uh that site. Um, so that's, that's uh worked in into the resolution.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And so there was a, I went ahead and a motion, and was there a second? I forget.
I believe there was a a second, Mr. Mayor. If if not, I I believe it was by Councilmember uh.
Yes, alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for uh holding, holding uh the vote, sir.
Alright, that, no, thank you. So what we'll do, uh, do we, so there's a motion that was second. Any objections? See, now, so, alrighty. Thank you. Alright, so at this point, yeah, thank you. Alright, so at this point, I'll go ahead and adjourn the regular meeting of the city council, and we're going on to the next one. Is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mayor?
We have one more, am I correct?
Hello? We have the uh Baldwin Park Charitable Relief Foundation.
Are you allowing me to speak, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, are we adjourning our regular meeting?
Yes, and we're gonna go on to another.
Great. Um, I I'd like to, I'd like to, um I'd like to take this opportunity or ask if respectfully if we could um adjourn our regular meeting um in honor of a fellow colleague of mine, who I worked with for many years. She dedicated over thirty-five plus years to the Baldwin Park Unified School District. Uh, Mrs. Barbara Bobby Bloom uh was an educator, um primarily at Walnut Elementary School, among others. Um, she was noted as a collector of many items, a fan of Coca-Cola and a supporter of all things patriotic, and she passed peacefully at her home um last Friday. So I would like to um offer my condolences uh to her family on behalf of our council. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and also close on a very dear friend of ours, uh who was also the chairperson of the Park and Recreations, uh Ms. Joanne Watkins. Um, a neighbor and and on Wallwood Drive. Our family met uh both her and her late husband, Bill Watkins, in nineteen ninety-nine. They were the first ones that came over to greet us, and we've been friends, uh li- uh lifetime friends uh with this beautiful family. So our condolences goes out to uh the Watkins family for caring uh Joanne, a very and special friend of all of us at City Hall. Thank you. Alright.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? Uh, thank you. Um, I'd like to also close uh this meeting in honor of uh Mr. David Gaither. Uh, he passed last week, uh, you know, a coach and a longtime uh resident here in Baldwin Park. Uh, you know, associated with the Road Runners and the Braves. Uh, you know, his loss uh, you know, leaves a a huge hole in our community and and our hearts and prayers are with his family uh during this time. Thank you.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, thank you for mentioning that. A new, great person and participant, and and as you mentioned right now in various uh uh events throughout our community as well. What, before, I also forget what I close on, in behalf of uh Ring He Minis, also a longtime resident of the city of Baldwin Park, who passed about a week and a half ago, was at every concert. As a matter of fact, uh prior to the COVID, she indicated, who's coming to the concerts because we're going. And unfortunately, she left us, but she's with us in spirit. Alright, thank you very much. At this point, I'll go, I'll move for adjournment of the regular city council meeting. That is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See, now, so move. Alright, at this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park Charitable Relief Foundation. Uh, so at this point, we're going to go over to board member, excuse me, the uh well, I guess we, I'll make a motion for uh the new business approved meeting minutes. That is my motion, and staff report as well.
Second.
Second, any objections? See, now, so move. So at this point, I'd like to uh close uh the Baldwin Park Charitable Relief Foundation. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you very much, people. Good night, and vive Baldwin Park!
Thank you.
Vive Baldwin Park!
Bye, everyone.